Um, with the twenty eighth being the next morning and also the um council meeting. That's what it's called.
What's the uh weather like?
Uh, as it is rest. Um, as it is evening, um, it is actually bitter cold is probably the coldest night of the spring that has yet been.
Hmm, a cold front. I don't know if that's how weather works here. Okay. It is the twenty seventh of Cloudscatter. We um went back to see Valcrone. And he was a busy man, seemed to have taken over administration of the city in lieu of Captain Hawks and his duties. And Captain Hawks had been at the city council all day. It turns out that the target of the assassination was Lord McCroy. We made our way to the city administrators and uh the uh house of Lord McCroy and we uh Captain Hawks gained us an audience. And then well, I could tell that the man was at his at his very end, uh desperate, crazy even perhaps. She gave the signet ring to Floki. In a way, I always knew that Floki, that would, that would happen. Uh, not in the way like Lord McCroy said where he saw it or something, uh but um I could feel it. And uh so the signet ring of House McCroy is with two, with uh Floki now. And the city council is about to begin. That's the main bits.
That is the main bits. Uh, the council meeting will be happening in seven hours. Uh, in the wee hours of the morning. So whatever we'd like to do in the meantime, whether that be rest or uh uh go to some bars again or
Kuroki.
Or go looking elsewhere for more danger. Uh, we have that option.
Yes, Floki.
We have drinking to do.
I, 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 I think I've had my fill.
Alright. Did we successfully send someone off to bury some barrels?
We said we wanted to.
We said you wanted to, so if we want to, we can do that now.
Right. Hey, Rhonda.
She uh looks to you.
Manual labor to do.
Uh, so who else gonna go on this away team?
NPCs.
All of them?
However many fit on the red herring, it needs to be a stealth job.
Let's say Stroeder, cuz he's basically married to the red herring at this point. Uh Rhonda, cuz she is uh
Competent.
Competent. That's the word I was looking for, for sure. Uh, who else we need? We got some brawn in there. Let's give uh Swipes. He's experienced as well.
Experience is the only thing he is.
Uh, and Aiden, cuz Aiden needs to prove himself to the crew a little bit more.
Oh, he's just died. He's not coming back.
He didn't just die.
That's like when in, you're in a war movie and one guy's like, let me show you the picture of my wife. It's like, oh, it's over for you. You're not coming back.
Nah, uh, no, if there's anyone that has plot armor, I think it's Aiden, cuz I need him to get back to the, to Altaroth. Cuz I have stuff that he needs to do there.
He's never coming back down.
Probably not, but if there's one character I want that.
Stepped onto the boat and then the, and then the narrator was like in a suave British accent and he never returned.
So, so where, where we at right now?
Uh, you're on the docks.
We're on the docks. So, uh, 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 Floki, so you're going to the uh council meeting, right? Is anybody else going with you or just you?
All of you are coming with me. We've been over this. The last time that there was a council meeting, the man wearing this signet ring was assassinated.
Yeah, I know. That's why I really didn't want to be in there with you.
I know you're coming.
Okay, well, I might change into a spider or something. That way they can't see me and it won't kill me when I'm trying to kill you, but.
He'll fit in. It's a room of politicians.
I wanna, I wanna make sure that you wanted us to be there because if not, I think we'd break Floki up north to top the.
I will die.
You're scared. I can get it. Okay, we'll be there.
Can you turn into a tiny spider?
A tiny spider, pretty small. Yep. I can turn in all kinds of stuff, buddy.
Can you do it now?
What if?
Yeah.
Can you, can you take a hint?
Haha, no. Well, well, we try.
What if you could get into the suit or the hat of Ruggio Lebonk?
Who's Luggio?
Uh, well.
Lebonk, he's one of the, he's one of the houses, isn't he?
Ruggio Lebonk is a, uh.
Is the ancient enemy of my family.
Wait.
That I just joined.
What? Oh, yeah, that you just. It's like more secrets, what? I've been waiting to say this, actually.
I can probably do it, but I think I can only do it for like an hour at a time. Unless I leveled up, then I think I could do it for two, but I can't.
Yeah. Close, so close.
That won't work. Not yet, anyway.
Although, how long does polymorph last?
An hour.
Okay.
I think it might be eight hours. Subtle difference here.
I think true polymorph is the longer one of the two. Anyway, um, so yeah, we have a couple hours to waste. Are we, do you want us uh, long rests in between now and then? Something we wanna do? Have anything else we wanna do in the meantime?
I'm gonna take a long rest. I am. And I'm gonna cast my, some good berry before I take my long rest. So I have some good berries for three, I'll cast three of.
Okay.
I mean, I'll take a long rest and read whatever book um Tulu just gave me. So I don't know what that does. Does it give me proficiency in uh acrobatics and athletics? Is that what it does?
Yep, it does that. And then the other book uh gives you a lot of information on uh Deepstone and the gods of the dwarves, uh Psy and Amok.
And that's Floki's got that one.
Uh, oh, you give it to Floki?
Yeah, I figured that's who would. I mean, unless he wants to give it to Kloroki, I figured Floki was kind of the more, more of the lore dude.
You see why you'd think that.
Since he can't do anything.
Wrong.
Captain Floki. Everyone in that meeting is going to hate you.
I, that's quite an assumption. I mean, they barely know me.
They're going to hate you.
In the future, hopefully.
We're going to have to play it by ear, I think, as far as keeping you not dead, but.
Got a few of those.
I'm wondering what your plan is. What are you be saying to them?
Uh, well, I, I assume that I um meetings, as, as all meetings do, well, it will have a purpose. Uh, there will be, there will be items to be discussed. I, my intention is to not, and my intention is to find out what those are and respond to them as they come up. I uh I don't have like a speech prepared. I'm not, I'm not, I'm just kind of bobbing and weaving, man.
Aye.
There's no grand plot. It's just, I'm, I'm just trying to stay above water here.
Are you sure?
No, I'm not sure.
Okay, well, I just wondered, you know, a lot of these council meetings, are you sure that like, like a lot of us can go in with you? Or usually it's kind of just like a, I, I mean, it's not always an open to public kind of thing, so I didn't know.
We'll find out. If you can't just like wait outside the door when you hear screaming, break down the door. It's, it's. You can sneak in too. Um, maybe as uh, maybe if you could do it as something that, that people wouldn't attempt to squish on sight, maybe like a uh butterfly. I was about, yeah, we were. I was trying to be a little dramatic with my presentation, but I was gonna say butterfly. It wouldn't be subtle. But there's it, you know, there, there's two kinds of stealth. There's not being seen and there's not being noticed. Your mission is to pioneer a third kind of stealth in which you are both seen, noticed, and additionally, they don't try to kill you.
Understood.
You know, uh, we do have two allies in the city.
I don't know that Sephiroth should attend the meeting.
Okay, I was gonna say Sephiroth could attend the meeting.
Yeah, I don't think that's the best idea. He's a little shy.
He is a bit shy.
He doesn't really seem to like people or moving around.
It would be a great way to, to like shift the political mood in the city, really, really take control of the meeting. But I don't know if that's our play right now.
When you're going to have a presentation, it's good to have a big opener.
I also think we should uh consult Sephiroth before, before we plan to do anything with him.
Oh, I'm sure it's fine.
Yeah, I, I don't think Sephiroth's talked to anyone in seventy years, so I, I don't know that he's got a lot of current advice.
No, I mean, make sure he agrees to being taken to a council meeting before.
Oh, no, I, I, I don't know this.
What I mean is uh, there's a word, uh, some good old fashioned uh well, nepotism. Uh, we need to uh, uh, find uh, we have allies and we should put them in places of power as well.
I'm not sure there's a lot of openings.
Well, when you're a giant slime monster, you can make them, but we, we can put a bean in that.
You know, keep it in mind, if there's like, if there's like a, a town sheriff that needs appointed, I, I, I'll, I'll throw Kloroki that uh, that hat for sure, or or if there's like a town drunk position, I, I'll also throw that hat at Kloroki. Um, his head can hit, his head can fit a lot of hats. I'm, I'm gonna throw everything at Kloroki. That's the moral of the story.
I'm not sure I agree to any of this.
That's, that's the fun thing about being volunteered. You don't have to.
Alright, uh, are you, are the rest of you gonna take long rests? Are you gonna just, you have anything productive you wanna do before bed?
Fagrin attends to all of his duties and talks to Quintral about the ship's supplies and make sure that they're uh being um resourced and acquired and takes a look at the duty log to see if there are any uh discrepancies based on the concerns that the crew had recently.
Quintral gives you a list of uh honeydews, uh, the main one being that the ash in the uh lagoon has caused severe wear on the outer hull of the ship to the point where uh the blue sealant teal that uh Twilight Revenge has, um, it is uh faded away and it will no longer serve its purpose as shark repellent. Which will make fishing a bit more tedious as large sharks will be, have to be fended off whenever fishing is taking place. Um.
I didn't even know this Twilight's Revenge had shark repellent paint on it.
That's why we haven't eaten any sharks lately. We're chilling out, gone.
It's kind of a bit nice though, cuz you, you, you have like a free swim area too everywhere it goes, but like now it's like a little more dangerous.
If you wanna smell like shark repellent.
Uh, anyway, uh, that is the number one thing they has as far as ship duties go. Uh, the crew itself has been actually much better since Aiden got his tattoo. Um, with Aiden being a dark elf, he is one that stands out amongst the crowd of them. Uh, even though he was one of the first to join, uh, the others felt uh a bit odd. And ever since then, with Swipes joining up, him being a local, no one else really trusted him. Um, but he is also proving his stripes as well. Uh, but yeah, so the Quintral actually gives you uh good news as far as the crew's concerned. Um, they're still a bit uh uneasy about this talk of a uh village monster. But other than that, they're um doing a lot better.
Uh, then Fagrin goes up uh and spends the rest of the time playing his uh
Ocarina.
Ocarina on the, and singing to, to Tago.
Wonderful. Like specifically to Tago?
Yeah, he uh, he, he sings to her lovingly, looks out to the ocean and talks to the ocean.
And Tulu would also, you know, he'd like to read his other book. I got the, the, the Common Man's Magic User Guide. I wanna go ahead and read that. I won't use the spells right now, Jake, but can I give you a map after? Cuz I, I got a list here and I'm gonna narrow it down to the four I need.
Okay, yeah, you could just do me that list.
Can give you that later and I won't use them till I, okay, cool.
Uh, yeah, uh, Fagrin, I'd like you to give me a charisma saving throw, please.
Net twenty.
With a natural twenty. Last time you brought out your instrument, there was a bit of teasing and jostling from the other crewmates. Um, Fagrin's never been musically inclined, though his heart is in the right place. Um, something about uh seeing Floki fit this um, fit this description within uh Fagrin's own mind and, and finally fulfilling goals that he knew that he would. Um, you find it inner peace and you find it not as hard um to make the melodies flow. And a bit more natural, the notes hit perfectly. For a moment, you see, as, for a moment, you see phantoms um begin to flock uh along the shoreline. Uh, eventually a few of them land on the banister of the ship itself. Um, as the sun sets, the sky turns to a vibrant orange. The cool bitter cold night air rushing past. There is a warmth that Fagrin feels. And for a moment, you feel this sensation like your feet begin to become damp. Um, and, and you look down and there is uh kelp and seaweed around your ankles and tied up around your boots.
I uh, he um, I think he uh, he noticed, yeah, I've got to notice it. He takes um his boots off and he uh, like stays with all of that stuff and just like lays and sleeps there like that.
Nice. Fantastic. Alright, uh, Kloroki, you do anything for bed?
I was just reading my book and taking a long rest.
Just reading your book. Alright, you can gain those proficiencies.
I imagine, I imagine it's a book of like varying like acrobatic and athletic things to do. He's just like practicing out of that book is basically what he.
Yeah, I picture it like a, like a physics ed, like one-on-one book. And like this is what stretching does to your muscles, like this is.
Probably got a special appendix in there to how to use your tail to improve your.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Like better balance and being able to land your feet every time, no matter how far you fall. Yeah, things like that. Um, proper uh horn grooming techniques and other things like that, yes. Um, uh, Floki, what about you?
I was, I was just planning to, to go on the ship's deck and look out at the stars reflecting on the water while not sleeping cuz I'm nervous.
Uh.
Listen to, listen to some, some music by Cap over here.
He flutters down and lands on the deck beside you. Uh, laying down on her chest and resting her hands up against her face, she uh kind of sighs a moment. Says, it's not that bad, I don't think.
I don't know, I, I there's a lot going on. It's, it's very, well, I don't know, you know, I'm thinking about this a little bit. I don't know quite what I was expecting coming out here sailing the southerly seas. It certainly, you know, stuff certainly happened. It's a lot of, a lot of stuff.
A lot.
Has this been what you expected?
A little bit. I kind of thought Lady'd be back by now.
That's been strange. I've been ex, I've been waiting for something dramatic to happen. And it hasn't.
I'm a bit worried about her.
I am too. I didn't know if you'd have any particular insight into, into what she's got going on or if it's all.
No, I'm, I, I pretty much know as much as you know.
Oh, right.
I mean, I think our, I think our relationship is a little bit deeper than yours. But that's, that's, I mean, that's not your fault.
Yeah, no, it's okay. I'll try not to act like it hurt me.
You certainly tried and she like, kinda like, at you on the, on the toe.
And, and Psy is hanging out in her home squatting, which is interesting. So she's not back there. So she's, she's out doing whatever, whatever it was she set out to do. In hindsight, I should have asked before she left. Uh, well, that's how it goes sometimes. You know, communication is an important part of any relationship. I have a strong and abiding belief.
Speaking of communication, do you have a speech prepared for tomorrow?
No.
Do you want me to write you some cue cards or something?
No, I, I think I'm gonna wing it. It's worked out well so far. I mean, I went in and met that McCroy guy with no preparation whatsoever and he adopted me. So I think I ain't gonna fix what ain't broke.
That's good, uh, cuz it was kind of a fake suggestion anyway. I don't, I don't think I can even lift a pen, so.
I believe in you. And if you can't, then we could certainly get uh Kloroki to teach you some exercises. I think he knows a lot about like strength training.
Uh, she giggles, um, and then uh flutters her way up to her house up in the crowsness.
Yep. Oh, look at that. Fagrin's been eaten by seaweed.
No, what? No. Oh, my boots.
Yeah. One of those nights.
Linzu comes up with a mop and just pushes it onto the sea. He's like, it happens a lot, actually.
Well, what did you, Linzu, where, where were you? Why, why, how long have you been standing there?
Uh, a while. I just wanted to clean that up before you yelled at me and told me to clean it up.
That's fair.
We live here, actually. It's, it's a, our home.
Hey, God, keep it tidy.
Okay, you can go now, Linzu.
Okay, kinda sleepy anyway.
Alright, we uh rest up the night, wake up in the morning with all of our stuffs, or at least most of our stuffs. Um, and uh about five thirty in the morning, uh, this, the sun is not quite up. But the faint light has um given some illumination to the skies uh as the sky turns to a uh nice shade of deep indigo instead of pitch black nightness. Um, he comes down to wake up Floki uh saying it's best not to be late.
Yes, what time was that?
She uh looks around for some type of timekeeping implement. She kind of shrugs. She's like, I'm pretty sure soon.
Uh, probably, uh, you know, probably better early than a, than a other possibilities. Alright, bodyguards, attend me.
You have your, you have your jacket that gives you advantage on persuasion and your hat gives you something.
Plus one crimson.
Mm-hmm.
I'm wearing my old tattered, ragged, patched brown jacket now.
And you've never looked better. Alright.
Hey.
Ondelay.
Okay, but one thing real quick.
Lay the on delay.
Don't forget, like, if we have time after the meeting, I guess we don't have time before unless we can't go in. Then I'll go do it while you're at the meeting. But uh, we might wanna look around and buy some uh, see if we can buy some healing potions sometime. Just see if we can find any.
Aye.
Probably a good idea.
I've heard that there, well.
Shut up. And, and, and by the way, uh, uh, Fagrin, uh, Floki, uh, not you, Kloroki, you can heal yourself, but here's, here's y'all some good berries, uh, fifteen each.
Fifteen each?
Yeah, I cast, yeah. No, fifteen each for you, Fagrin, and fifteen for you, uh, Floki.
That's a lot of good berries.
Alright, Kloroki doesn't get any?
I didn't think you did any, Kloroki, did you? Cuz you can heal, right?
Zusa and Minky come up and like, uh, we don't get any of those.
Be fifteen starving children.
Uh, well, go see, I already gave him, you know, I'm a, I'm an honorable guy, as you can always tell, but uh, um, I already gave him to Fagrin and, and uh Floki. If uh, if they wanna give you one, that's, they can, but you know, that's all I got right now.
Wow, shift the responsibility. Very, very uh, very mature Captain Tulu.
I give of my fifteen, uh, I give them thus. I give one to uh Quintral, Linzu, Topham, Page, Durfle, Doros, Clyde, Zusa, Minky, Stroider.
Stroider's not here.
Oh, sorry. There are others.
Okay.
Dying somewhere.
Right. Uh, as you uh hand them all out to everyone, the, they all uh grin from ear to ear uh and immediately eat them. And then
Okay.
And, and then immediately high five each other and say, we don't have to eat the rest of the day. There's so much more time for other activities. It's fantastic.
So much room for activities.
Yeah, I guess their eating is dramatically less pleasurable when you live on a ship.
Uh, anyway, we're gonna continue. Uh, you guys make your way throughout the city on a pretty uneventful morning. Uh, eventually making your way to uh the courtyard uh uptown. Uh, where you can see uh a few dozen guards uh standing around in this uh flowery courtyard uh surrounded by uh five-story tall stone walls. Um, uh, this open sky above you, uh, which is just barely brighter uh light coming down um from the deep shadows that kind of surround the edges of this, these tall walls. Um, standing amongst these guards, you can see uh several uh taller figures and several dwarven-looking figures, uh, all wearing these bright regal outfits. Um, one amongst them kind of stands out, this uh five foot nine, um uh, very dark-skinned uh woman with a shaved head, large golden hoop earrings on either side of her uh, uh, on either ear, uh, then on one of her shoulders is perched this very large uh vibrantly colored um phantom. Uh, usually phantoms are black and white. This one has um more like a star lane, has this like uh iridescent blue tinge to the feathers uh on her shoulders and she's wearing this uh regal red uh dress with gold fil, filigree all over it. Um, next to her is a smaller uh more uh goblinoid looking individual with large uh yellow eyes. Um, wearing this uh very tight uh black pressed suit um with this uh bifold hat on the top of his head. Uh, he's holding a uh, looks like a clipboard of sorts with uh some uh individual papers tucked under his arm. Uh, across from them is staying this uh teal scaled uh lizard bo, uh lizard uh folk that you guys recognized from before. This is Malik. He is um uh Valcrone's uh right-hand man. He's his uh secretary. uh, Valkrone's, uh, right-hand man. He's his, uh, secretary. It just keeps, uh, separate paperwork. Uh, but basically he's here so Valkrone doesn't have to get up in early in the morning after working late last night. Uh, so he's here. Uh, you can also see, um, a larger, uh, dwarf, uh, with, uh, dark black hair and a dark black beard that has a large gray streak down the center of it. He's wearing this heavy dwarvish armor that is definitely, uh, more for show than it is for, um, for use. It has like these bright golden, uh, uh, emblems on the, the pauldrons, which would definitely be instantly damaged in actual combat. Um, he's holding a, uh, very ornate looking hammer, which looks more like an arcane focus than the actual war implement. Uh, you can tell just by looking at it, it's probably ceremonial of sorts. Um, uh, then you also see this tall, thin, elvish looking figure, which looks very similar to the priest you guys saw at the, at the church of Otriarch, but, um, he is, uh, a bit different and his eyes are a vibrant green instead of the blue. Uh, you, you also can notice, um, this one individual, which you have seen several times before, but usually in the distance of a crowd, um, this figure, which looks, uh, sort of like an automaton, um, with silver skin, um, and a regal cape, uh, he almost stands like something like a, um, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? Like, like a wizard, I think, is what he looks like, um, just by the way he holds himself. Uh, and let's see, I think I have a handout for him somewhere just to get a better description of what it looks like, but I don't know where I put it. So I'm not gonna worry about it right now.
Silver robot with a cape. Got it?
Yep. Uh, let's see if I use the search function I can find too. Um, but yeah, those individuals staying amongst this group, uh, looks like they're, uh, waiting for the, uh, council chamber to be opened before, or having a meeting, but basically it looks like, um, a bunch of politicians way outside the courthouse is basically what it looks like as you guys approach. Uh, guards standing nearby, uh, start dowsing, uh, torches as the sun is coming up. Ah, there he is. Uh, showed players again. Yeesh. Uh, there we go. Okay. Finally found that. I knew I had it in there somewhere. Okay. So with all these, uh, figures standing around, uh, Malik is actually the first to, uh, approach you guys. Uh, Malik, uh, kinda stops you as he notices you walking up. He says, oh, uh, hello, uh, Crims, Skimadus, uh, he, why are you here? Do you have urgent news?
Uh, hello, fellow officials. Uh, I am the, uh, representative of, uh, of our House McCroy today. And I'll, I'll hold up my, my hand backwards and show off the, the ring.
Uh, he looks at it, uh, frantically, uh, and quickly covers your hand with his own and kind of like, uh, holds your hand and tries to conceal it, looks over his shoulder in either direction, make sure that, uh, the others don't see it, goes, you, you're the one that Shavren stole, uh, Shavren, he chose you? Uh, this is quite odd.
Odd. This was the most reasonable choice I've ever encountered. Um, uh, have you know I'm entirely fit for the position?
Uh, uh, I mean, no disrespect, that's just, um, uh, have you ever spoke business at all before whatsoever? I mean, I know you are a sailor and of course you keep inventory of things of that nature, but this is, um, yeah, there's a lot of, uh, showmanship and, and poise.
I can do one of those things.
He, he looks at, uh, Cloroki and you can see like the look on his face is kind of like, uh, uh, he kind of pats Floki on the side and he looks at you as if you are the parent of a child and he's, and he's, and he's, he's like, you're a poor kid. You're a poor kid. That's the look he gives you. Uh, and he looks back at Floki again and he says, well, if you, uh, just follow my lead, I could help you from some embarrassment.
Don't worry. I think the embarrassment is inevitable. It's best to just hope it.
At that point, I speak up says, yeah, if anybody's gonna embarrass anybody, Tulu's gonna embarrass Floki, just so you know.
Come on, you haven't embarrassed anyone in ages. You've talked such a good game, but, uh.
Uh, very well. Uh, let me, uh, commence introductions then before the meeting commences. Uh, and he turns around and kind of clears his throat and goes, I'm Malik, uh, would like to formally introduce the representative of House McCroy. At Shavren's absence, we have Master Floki. And, uh, there is like this dispersal from the guards as you get these, uh, glares from these individuals across the courtyard.
Um, Like to just keep an eye out for anything that's gonna come flying at Floki.
Okay. Uh, I will note that here. Uh, the first one he introduces is this, uh, um, automaton looking individual. He goes, this is Master Jakar Ulf. Uh, he was Shavren's apprentice. Uh, this is also, uh, Master Faust Ovak. Uh, and he points at, uh, the elvenly figure and he says, uh, city manager. And goes, this is Lady Baravan, Council Secretary, Head of Research and Arcane Studies. And, and this here is, uh, Lord Ruric Gillyard. He's a architect, uh, city planner and, uh, mine oversight. These individuals will be, uh, entertaining most of our discussion this morning. And they all kind of, uh, come up towards you and kind of just inspect you generally from head to toe. Uh, Bessa, Lord, uh, or Lady Baravan, uh, the dark, uh, skinned lady holds up her hand forward. Um, and, uh, as if like, uh, she presents her hand towards you. And, uh,
This is dwarven lady?
Uh, she is, uh, give me an insight check. She's not dwarvish, but give me an insight check. See if you can tell just what she is.
Okay, I'm trying to put names to my, to the notes that I took here. So I'm asking, all right, insight, right? Very insightful. I don't know what she is. Uh, that's a six.
Uh, six, uh, you think human, maybe half elf. She doesn't look, uh, very otherworldly whatsoever. At least she doesn't look that way. Uh, but she presents her hand to you and she goes,
Is it? She's kissing the hand thing.
Okay, you do it. Okay, she goes, uh, she, uh, blushes, uh, ever so faintly. And without smiling, she says, uh, finally one with some manners. Uh, uh, next to her is the stout dwarf, uh, who kind of slams his hammer down, uh, like the hilt of his hammer on the ground as he stops forward and kind of rumble and groans. He's like, Shavren is not making it, I presume.
Does seem to be the, the case, unfortunately.
That's a shame. You, you, uh, precede my, uh, uh, inquiries to him then.
Mm-hmm.
Good, good. And he kinda looks to Jakar and he says, I hate for other people to try to give their two cents where it's not needed. And he, uh, holds out his hand.
Shake it?
Okay, you do. He, he shakes it back kind of, uh, forcefully like, uh, a standard dwarf. And then before he steps away, he picks a big and spits right on your boots.
Oh, oh, oh.
Uh,
Tulu starts glaring at him.
All right, you do. Uh, he takes a step back and, uh, Malik says, and finally, uh, Faust Ovak. Uh, the elvenly, uh, figure which matches the one from the temple before, uh, says, have we met?
I don't think so. Were you at the temple recently?
Oh, you mean the Temple of Otri? No, that's, my brother runs it though. It's, it's just strange because you seem so familiar to me.
That is strange because I, I think you seem familiar to me too, but that might be because I met your brother.
That's, that might be so. Uh, uh, you see he panics, you see panic in his eyes as he begins to frantically look about the other ones and see if they know who his brother is or not, uh, quickly, uh, kinda steps, uh, back and like he, he steps forward to present his hand and then, uh, just, he decides, you know what? This is, I'm, I'm not, I'm not gonna be here right now. He just kinda steps back, takes himself out.
When he was looking around frantically, Clu just kinda like a little like knowing his wake.
Awesome. Give me a, um,
Deduction check.
No, not deduction. What's the word I'm looking for? I think, actually, I'm gonna roll. I'm gonna have him roll his insight. See if he, all right, uh, he kind of, he kind of, uh, holds up his hand in a way to like shield his face. Okay. And then just kind of plays it off like he's rubbing his cheek. Uh, but, uh, then, uh, finally the guards open up the gates. And, uh, one of them steps forward wearing this, um, this blue sash that kind of crosses the front of his chest and he says, Captain Hawks is giving the all clear. And then he kinda steps aside and these, all these folks start to just kinda shuffle in into this building.
And, and Tulu wants to kinda whisper in Floki's ear while he's got the chance where nobody else can hear him. Uh, hey, don't forget to ask about the double fruit, you know, in the blight, okay? If you get the chance to.
That's a good call. I'll see if I can wring anything out of him.
Uh, Malik, Malik kinda pulls your sleeve a bit Floki and says, uh, they'll allow at least one to escort you in, but the others will have to wait outside.
All right, well, it's a hard choice. Let me think for a moment. Cloroki, I think, uh, uh, your time is now.
Fine. And I, I go walking in after, uh,
Excellent.
Fagrin, uh, you feel, uh, a slight tug on your ear lobe as you hear a whisper in your ear from Key says, also, I can hear everything and relay, relay everything to you too, if you want.
Thank you.
So she's gonna, everything that Floki says and hears, you will also be able to hear.
Okay.
Can I hear also or just fight?
Uh, it depends how discreet you want her to be about it because if, if you.
He only does it in, uh, in sign language. She's one of those sign translators.
No.
She's really unhelpful because she's, uh, invisible.
Yeah, she is. Yeah, exactly. So she, she, she's a pixie. So her voice is not very strong as it is. Uh, but she could project to both of you if you wanted to. Just wanna be discreet. So.
I'll, I'll pass along anything. I mean, you know.
Okay.
If there's something.
Yeah, Tulu, Tulu's gonna stay outside and since Key can go in and relay the information to at least one of us, Tulu's not planning on sneaking inside.
All right. Uh,
Clu's just keeping an eye out for anything out of the ordinary, for what looks out of place.
Right. Clu, uh, I, uh, well, first of all, Tulu, I think you should be ready to use those, uh, talents that you have if you need them, uh, but Clu.
Which one, bro? I got all kinds.
Aye, well, it, I'm not quite sure depending on the outcome, if it should be one that's really small or really big yet.
Uh, I got you.
But, uh, Clu, I think, I think we should take, uh, parts of the crew and carefully we should go and, uh, try to case the different parts of the, 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 the grounds here and see if we can see any danger.
Uh, I'm going in with Floki.
Oh.
Yeah, cause Floki wanted me to accompany him into the, the council.
Oh, I thought you said that you were, I thought you said you were saying.
No, I'm saying like when I'm, when I'm in the council chambers, like with Floki, I'm looking out for anything amiss or out of place or that looks sketchy.
Okay, I thought I could just.
General keeping an eye out.
Okay. In that case, Tulu, we'll do that, uh. I love, we, we can go together because, uh, uh, we'll need your talents and I've got, uh, got, uh, that friend of Floki. My ear, I can, I can hear.
Okay. Well, we just need to make sure that we can get back pretty quick in case we need to, you know, come in and bust up the party. You know what I mean?
Aye, maybe within eyesight. Listen, uh, who's, who's competent? No one is the answer. Uh, I, he doesn't say that out loud, but like he, like he turns to the crew and he's like, ah, yes, Rhonda's not here. Right.
Fantastic.
Um, Quintral.
Are, are you, you know, how are you contacting Quintral? Did he come with you guys?
The whole crew's here.
The whole crew.
That's why I was curious about this too, because like, yeah, we're, Floki said this. Floki was like, let's have everybody in case things go down, right?
I meant, I meant the three of you.
Oh.
That's okay. Uh,
Yeah, the people who can save me from dying. That's, that's who I wanted.
The thing is, Quintral coming along is the most reasonable because he's also the, the keeper of the ship's manifest. And like he is the bookkeeper of the ship. So it kinda makes sense.
Also like, even though he's never gained any credibility for it, he is actually a really smart man.
Yeah.
So, okay, so Quintral and, um, uh, what about maybe Doros? He's, he's a pretty, uh,
Cross is used.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Quintral and Doros. And everybody else on the ship.
I thought, I thought a group of them, weren't they going to bury the barrels right now?
Yeah, that was Stryder. Rhonda swiped some nade.
So everybody's at the ship except for Doros and Quintral. And then of course there's the other group that took the red hearing. Um, uh, Quintral, Doros, listen. Go over in that corner there. See if you see any trouble, uh, let us know. We're gonna like, kinda go to the courtyard. We're gonna like, watch for anything that's sus- that's suspicious.
All right.
Cool. Party of four people and we've successfully split the crew into four different groups.
Five. One, two, three, four, five groups.
Quick question. Where, um, Cloroki and Floki walked into the gathering room or whatever it is? Um, were there guards outside the door? Is the door closed? Was it a big double door bolted?
All right. So here, let me describe this to you in freehand drawing. All right. Uh, let's see, let's go to the bottom of the screen here and I'll, and I'll start to draw, draw this out. All right. So there's this major castle and it kind of looks like this general shape from the outside. So there's like this big walled off area. All right. Uh, the streets of town kinda come up like this and then turn down like this along it. All right. But there's like this T intersection where it kinda goes like this inside the wall. There's like this portcullis here. And like beyond the wall is, this is like in, in the castle, this direction. Try to draw an arrow here. Uh, that was the worst arrow ever in my life. Um, but if you go that way, you're like in the castle and there's a set of stairs over here that kinda goes up and that's where you guys, uh, met Lord McCroy last time. All right. There's also a separate portcullis here, um, which kinda goes in this direction where it's like this large courtyard area. Uh, so you guys are kind of within this, the castle already. You're in this like courtyard area, but there's like, it's all walled off from every direction, except for.
That you were drawing stuff. Sorry.
Except for the big set of double, double doors here, which were just opened by the guards. Uh, he said that, uh, Hawks gave the all clear. Um, which kinda leads into a chamber. So from here, there's not really much. There's a couple of guards standing around in this like garden area. But there, there's not a lot going on here because it's kinda like this secluded area.
This looks like, like a sad man who's like laying on the couch with a miniature horse in a jar that's like on his back.
I, I am.
I was way too late on that to figure out, oh wait, he's drawing something. And now I'm seeing a sad man with a tiny, tiny horse.
With his arms laid over. Um, and so, so, uh, Cloroki and Floki went in here.
Mm-hmm.
And, and the, myself and Fagrin are out here in the courtyard?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Uh, so you guys, if you would like, I mean, you could, you could scale the wall. Uh, you could try to sneak out and into this portcullis area, which is a different access into the castle itself. Um, you can do whatever, any, anything you could think of, you can do it and feel free to interrupt me at any point if you have something you want to do.
I wanna ask a meta question here. What do you guys wanna do?
I, I want you to start an entirely superfluous and unnecessary heist. That's what I want.
I was just checking before we did that.
Honestly, I thought we were just gonna hang out and not really do anything.
Who is innocent? There's an innocence in there. There's, I really thought we were just gonna stand around, guys.
And Floki, if Floki gets in trouble, we know about. And Floki, if Floki gets in trouble, we know about it. We come busting in.
Tulu's like, alright, I'm hanging out. Tulu's like, I'm hanging out in the waiting room. Alright, and Fagrin's like, and now we must call in the cavalry.
That's, I'm, okay, listen, I'm sorry.
Let it go wrong first.
I'm, I'm failing on multiple levels here. I imagine this big rabble of all these weird looking pirates that were among all these nobles. And I was like, what are we doing here? What are we gonna do?
Still kind of like that, just a little downgraded from there.
Oh.
Um, alright, uh, are you having more questions about, uh, the situation outside? Uh, Brian?
No.
Okay. Uh, then I will start to describe what you guys see beyond the doorway. Um, as you guys step in, the first thing you notice is the sun has, uh, come up over the horizon. And though the rest of the town is still in this like, uh, off shadow, I don't know what you call that. It's like, not really in the light, but not really in the shadow either because the sun's not up over the horizon high enough to see it, or you know what I'm talking about? That time of the morning, like early, early morning, like the sun is just barely peeked over the horizon. So from.
That is called dawn.
So yes, at this point in the dawn, there is no actual like bright daylight throughout the city. But once the double doors open, there's this large panglass window where the sun is just peering through. And there's like a vibrant rainbow, okay, cast across the whole room. There's this massive, I would say like thirty foot by, uh, ten foot, um, long table with these large regal high chairs, uh, surrounding it. Um, a massive, uh, chandelier hanging from the ceiling, um, and these, uh, billowing crimson curtains that kind of, uh, surround the outer edge. Um, once you step into the chamber, there is, uh, a doorway to both your left and your right. Um, but the men kind of, uh, encircle the, um, table, um. Uh, Lady, uh, Baravan or Bessa, she, she sits at the head of the table. Um, the dwarf next to her on her left, uh, the elf next to her on her right. Um, the tin man, uh, beyond her, uh, and leaving, uh, three more chairs the other end of the table. Uh, this, uh, you could tell like there's a sense of, uh, not just like, uh, officiality, but I think Malik hit it on the head when he said there's a showmanship here. Um, it has a formality to it all. Um, when Malik kind of sits down, he sits down with a way with his papers just right that sit within this like, uh, imaginary space before him that has like his area of the table and like everyone kind of sits tight. Um, you hear a whisper from Rorik, uh, the dwarf to Jakar. And he says, you really think they've got the whole place locked down? And Jakar just nods agreeably. Uh, he looks over to, uh, Floki with a side eye. And then takes a deep breath and says, I believe they do. Otherwise we wouldn't be here right now. Uh, and you, uh, then can see from one of these side doors, uh, five, uh, men walk through the room. Um, they are wearing, uh, pauldrons, like these, uh, armed guards, uh, pauldrons, but the rest of their armor has been replaced with, uh, fine, uh, suit wear, uh, and they're holding these large silver platters. And they bring forth, um, the steaming tea and sit on the table, um, for the group. Uh, and then they go ahead and, uh, once they step out, um, the guards outside begin to close the doors. Uh, once the doors are closed, uh, you feel this, uh, almost tonal shift as every other person in the room, their eyes just lock on Lady Baravan or Bessa as she's been presented to you. Um, this regal lady at the end of the table, um, catches everyone's attention. And, uh, she stands up. Uh, real quick, Floki, are you wearing, um, Salem's amulet?
Yes, I don't take it off.
I didn't think you did, but I wanted to be sure before I say something. Um, you sense, as she begins to speak, there is this aura on the, like, that you can sense through the light on the, this, this, uh, window. You sense this aura kind of peering through and then you realize it kind of surrounds the whole room. Um, it's a, it's a very powerful spell that you know surrounds the room, but you don't notice it till she opens her mouth. And when she does, she goes, I believe we should get right to our speaking points. Firstly, with Shavine's recovery. He is still alive. And you see this like deep sigh of relief come from the dwarf and the elf and, um, Jakar kind of sits upright and goes, of course he is, we, I helped him. He, I got him to his room. I, and, uh, you see Bessa kind of holds out her hand, extending her finger to him, to him. She goes, speak when spoken to, master. You do not have the right of the floor. I do. And, uh, he's kind of, uh, folds his hands and says, sorry, my lady. Because, secondly, we should talk of the cost of the repair of the north gate. Which is, uh, quite unfortunate that the gate would be, uh, unusable for such some time. Uh, within just two days' time, we've already spent over four thousand dollars and, and making, uh, our ships take the extra time around and through and the extra congestion through the, the western gate is most unsettling. I have an idea though. We could, uh, um, use, uh, some of our, uh, funding from, uh, the Ordis, uh, Bunkers has already agreed to donate some of his extra, um, profit. And, uh, Rorik, the dwarf kind of sits up and he's like, are, are we going to just take the citizens' money? This isn't taxes. This is just straight up. What is this? And, uh, the elf across him, uh, Fraus, he's kind of speaks up and says, uh, this is something, um, unusual. We would use, uh, the money so willy nilly. Uh, you, you don't think that it makes us look weak? I mean, surely we could find profits elsewhere. The double fruit grove being shut down for so long is very unsettling, but we have profits, right? Uh, Rorik kind of shrugs. He says, the, the mines are wearing thin. The stone will run out eventually. Uh, Bessa kind of says, don't worry, we will have new runweed shipment soon. Our contact has already agreed to that. She kind of pauses for a moment and looks over to Floki. She says, maybe Shavine's representative has thought somewhere we can find extra profits.
The double fruits are, of course, a reliable source of income. What's being done at the moment to restore them?
You kind of hear a, uh, frantic sigh come from Fraus and Rorik kind of slams his fist on the table. He goes, who is this fool? He looks to you and he says, you know damn well just the same as the rest of us that no fruit have been coming from that grove for some time.
Yes. Are you, are you doing anything about it or just, just sputtering?
Oh, have, have you done anything about it? Those, those terrible vermin, we've, we've tried to stuff them out for some time now and, and, uh, it's, it's not worth wasting that many men over it. It's just, uh, let the groove rock as far as I'm concerned. And Bessa says, quiet now, Rorik, you're losing your head. Uh, she looks to you and says, the, the grove is, uh, out of commission. There are large, uh, hostile creatures that have been, uh, growing there.
I'm familiar with, uh, with the, the situation. I wanted to know if you'd made any progress in resolving it, if, uh, you had any familiarity with the blight.
Blight is a particular word. We have not, uh, associated with such a, a situation. And she kind of turns her head, uh, cocks her head a little bit and she's looking at you. And she says, uh, the ichthybods are, uh, more of an infestation in our opinion. However, uh, if you have suggestions on the matter, feel free to share them. We have seen several waves of individuals and Captain Hawks said it was no longer worth the work. Uh, and he had hired an individual to maintain a threshold so they would no longer encroach on our city.
If the, I've had, uh, uh, sort of leaned, leaned back a bit and let's say, I, I've, I've had a, uh, companion of, of mine investigate those woods. That he came away with a, a conclusion. He believed that these ichthybods were, had a connection to a new variety of double fruits that were introduced, uh, rather, uh, recently. I was hoping that you could, um, and are there perhaps, uh, do you know of this? Are, are there older version, are the older varieties of the double fruits, are they still around anywhere or is there merely? Are these newer double fruits the only ones left on the island?
Uh, go ahead and give me four persuasion checks.
Four persuasion checks.
You have them each at advantage.
Yep, I love making persuasions. Boy, I'm persuasive.
And you got a, you got plus one. I don't know.
That's all.
Has anyone else started drinking the tea that was set down?
Oh, yeah. Malik's been, Malik's been nervous, he doesn't have to say anything.
Yeah, to, or Cloroki is just like silently sipping at it.
Which one's Malik? Is he the goblin dude?
Uh, he is the, uh.
Lizard dude.
Yeah, I like Malik.
He's, he's Valkron's assistant. And he's kind of.
You abandoned us in his office.
Yeah. Um, there's also, um, uh, but yeah, uh, I was gonna say, uh, the, the taste of the tea is like a very cinnamony, uh, flavor with like, uh, hints of citrus.
Ooh, good persuasion, Jake, or Kaylin.
Got a twenty-four, fourteen to twenty-five and a twenty-three.
Alright, um, uh, you, uh, see the elf kind of cover his forehead and like massaging his temples um, in uncomfort. Um, everyone else kind of looks to you in, in, in general confusion. Um, and Bessa kind of speaks up and she says, if you mean prior to LaRugia's work, I don't think any of those fruits have not been used or consumed. They are a major export. I'm sure you are aware, uh, the, whatever, uh, strands or, uh, species which remain are, are we have to work with. Jakar, uh, the metallic fellow, uh, perks up and he says, if we're looking for something more like the original, and he kind of holds out his hands and like makes it like an air quotes. Um, he says, there are different species elsewhere if we, if we leave, leave the Iron Sea. And, uh, the dwarf kind of grunts and he says, we don't need to go on any goose chases to chase a, a fruit that's already causing as much trouble as it is. Uh, uh, it's a lost cause. Let's just move on. And he kind of hammers his, uh, hand on the table, um, angrily. Uh, uh, the elf across from him, uh, kind of holds out his hands wide and says, uh, Rorik, please, will you just be understanding that there is so much, uh, vitality to be had here with those double fruits? Uh, if you would just work a, a little less on, on being so selfish and a little more understanding of others, then maybe we could get somewhere around here instead of just running these circles. And he kind of grunts again under his breath and says, I wish Shavine was here. And, uh, they all just kind of look to you again. Uh, Malik kind of tugs on your shoulder Floki. And says, uh, also, I do know that you have leverage. If you're speaking of, of funding, I don't mean to, uh, be this way, but I do know where to board your ships. I, I, I did fill out the paperwork after all. Uh, maybe if you offered the barrels as payment, you know, that might work.
We have a buyer. I'd be willing, uh, Mr., Mr. Dungeon Master Fellow.
Mm-hmm.
What's the, remind me, what's the shortfall in this budgetary meeting? Is it four thousand gold?
Yeah.
He said four thousand dollars.
I did say dollars. I meant gold. I meant gold. Yeah.
Alright.
That's a little bit of like, I didn't prep speeches, so I just fall back to my native tongue and then it doesn't really make sense.
That's right. I, I can, I could find four thousand gold myself.
Uh, he kind of, uh, stutters. He's like, per day?
No.
Ha, 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 day, okay.
And he kind of, he kind of pats you on the shoulder. He says, but the arrows might be enough to persuade them to give you more time. Um, he kind of turns back and whispers, uh, to the goblin fellow who is literally not sitting at the table. He's, uh, he's kind of sitting, um, or standing behind taking notes. Um, and he kind of nods and he walks over, uh, to Bessa and whispers in her ear. And, uh, at that point, she's, uh, says, uh, let us, uh, move on and not waste any more time. We have other, uh, matters to discuss. Uh, and I know no one wants to speak of it, but I'll be the first to admit that we have a problem. There's a murderer in our streets. And, uh, it's like a, a utter silence kind of, uh, fills the room. And, uh, Fraus kind of, uh, stands up. He goes, as a city manager, we have seen, uh, a lot of different, uh, uh, murders and, uh, the, 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 the victims are always the same. Uh, lacerations across the throat and chest, uh, and, uh, seems to be a, a lack of, a lack of, uh, and you can see he's like, almost like gagging on the words. Mess afterwards. Whoever this murderer is, is very clean. And, uh, he also, uh, takes a deep breath before saying, and their main targets seem to be our gods. And, uh, Rorik, uh, the dwarf just kind of takes a deep breath. It's like, what are we gonna do to fix it? What about Hawks? Is he not already solving the mystery of the assassination? And, uh, Fraus kind of shrugs. He says, well, if he's, he can't be everywhere at once. He's only one person.
Mr. Dungeon Master, just remind me of the ghost attack that we.
The unseen murderer in the rain? Yes.
Alright. I will say nothing.
Okay. Um, uh, there's a, a uncomfortable silence for a moment before Jakar says, if you gave me a few days, I could return with implements to find this individual. Bessa says, by all means, Jakar, please tell us. He says, there are more artificers like myself and like in your employ, Bessa. That, that, they're just located on, on Splinter Dish. I could, uh, make way there, grab the needed supplies and return with implements to detect such means. Hawks does not need to be bothered with some measly murderer, even though he is affecting our city at this level. Bessa kind of folds her hands in a moment of, uh, deliberation.
I, I might, uh, I might not recommend going to Splinter Dish anytime soon in addition to the reports of plague that have been coming out of there. I've, uh, I've seen some of the pirates who are responsible for the, uh, attack the city just experienced, uh, making a port at Splinter Dish. It might be considerably dangerous. Considerably dangerous, to say the least.
I'm not concerned with disease. He, uh, says as he kind of takes his knuckle and bangs it across his tin head.
Well, this is a matter of the stabbing to like the pirates, so kind of, you know.
Oh, yes. Uh, he kind of turns back to, uh, Bessa and says. I would probably request an entourage as well. At least five men. And then he kind of looks back to you. Is like, is that gonna be enough?
Probably not. No, it's it's it seems like. Pretty hostile territory. I I, you know, I. Was gonna mention this because I'm afraid of sounding crazy, but I I did, uh, happen to. Are there any witnesses to to these attacks, these murders?
Um, there's like a frantic look about as everyone kind of looks at each other. It's like, do you know anything? Do you know anything? Um, and, uh, Fraus, uh, finds this. There have been people saying that it is, uh. Uh, unseen. Murderer. A ghost. The wind. Uh, a spectral figure. A creep.
That was my experience. I've actually borne witness to one of these attacks. I was, uh. That would have been a a point of, uh. An avenue of exploration that I would recommend, uh, you know, if you got anything for hunting down ghosts and phantasmal figures.
Jakar. Jakar kind of nods agreeably and he's like, that's exactly what I was meaning. And he, uh, begins to unfurl this, uh, bag and pull out some, uh, documentations. He opens up this book and like shows you this schematic. Uh, it looks like a, uh, uh, mixture between a magnifying glass and a spyglass. And like has like a lot of these little brass filaments that kind of come off of it. And he's like, he's like, uh, this here would help me detect, uh, any creatures invisible or extra plain or otherwise. Without eyes, a ruse and it's kind of hard to see something like that.
I'd like to kind of, uh, kind of lean in and sort of sort of body language. I'm sort of engaging him. Let's see. I I I, um. I'll tell you what, I I, uh, we can we can go over the details after the the meeting, but I I think this is actually a really good idea. That you've got here. I I think I can help you with, uh, with transportation and protection to Splinter Dish. Uh, if you if you. Meet up with me after the meeting. I'm sure we can get that squared away.
Oh, well. He kind of, uh, sits upright again, uh, looks to Bessa and says, uh. Uh, never mind. Representative House McCroy will be aiding me. And you hear kind of another gruff from the dwarf.
DM, I have a quick question if Cloroki knows this at all. Uh, when have all these murders occurred?
Um, so the one that you guys witnessed would have been three days ago now, I believe.
No, I I'm more talking about like the general time of day or whether that these murders occurred or do we not know that information?
Oh, yeah, they that information has not been discussed yet. However, if you bring that up in character, like you say that in character, that you.
I mean, I would probably what I'd probably do is I'd whisper that to Floki because I am not the representative of House McCroy. Floki is. I'm just a lowly bodyguard. Um. So yeah, what I'd probably do is whisper that to Floki as opposed.
Do these murders occur? Is it? Is it normally at night, a particular time of day?
It seems to mostly happen at night, yes. Uh, very particular, uh, in between the hours of, uh, midnight and then hour after midnight. Ah.
And if, uh, now my own memory might be, um. Betraying me, but wasn't it pouring down rain when this happened as well?
Yeah, that's what I recall.
Have these other murders occurred when it was raining?
Yes, is there is there, uh. Inclimate weather always? So so it's my experience.
Uh, uh, there's a bit of a pause as Fraus looks over his notes. He says, uh, no, that most reports say that here. It is, uh, unseen, leaves no trace of leaving otherwise, always happening at night. This does not imply any type of weather. However, there are rumors of it being, um, connected to nightmares as, uh, three reports of the seven have, uh, mentioned children complaining of nightmares. In every house nearby. Oh.
Sounds like something to keep an eye on. Perhaps in in. Till this, uh, uh, well, has has does the killer always us target guards who are alone or has it engaged groups before?
It has engaged multiples before. In fact, uh, two of our, uh, reports are from guards immediately at the scene.
All the same, it might be worthwhile to. Double up the patrols, uh. Numerically, the the numbers in in each group, even if that results in less groups, uh, being sent out.
Sorry, your I might cut out. Did you? What'd you say?
Uh, it might be worthwhile to, uh. Keep group, keep guards grouped up and and so that there's several of them with each other at a time. That perhaps it would reduce the frequency of attacks or maybe even if they can't prevent them, we'd learn something.
Ah, yes. I don't know if avoidance is an option, however. Might I suggest, uh, Lady Bessa, that we, uh, change shifts? Uh, leaving a gap between those hours of the night. I don't think much crime happens in those hours of the night. In fact, our crime rates have been quite low before this incident, so. Um, she, uh, looks at him. With this odd look of it. It's don't know if it's like discontent or or what it is, but, uh, she, uh, says. I don't know if it's wise to leave the streets unguarded on purpose just to avoid murder. I think that makes us look quite weak. Uh, I think. I think this, uh, representative of House McCroy and. Jakar here have an idea of how to solve this problem. I don't think any other, uh. Restraints are necessary. Uh, your idea about doubling up guards is good. We do have a surplus at the moment. And, uh. Uh. There's a a kind of a slight pause for a moment and then Bessa says. All right, uh, that leads us to our final point of tonight's meeting or today's meeting. Uh, she looks, uh, to the dwarf. And, uh, gives him the floor. He kind of stands up only a couple more inches taller than he was before sitting down. Says, yes, sir, uh, our stone mines are wearing thin. We're able to keep shipments out this rate for about one more month. And then we'll have to go deeper. When I'm afraid the cost of going deeper is, uh. Going to reduce our margins to. Well, nil anything. And you see him, uh, kind of frantically look across the table, avoiding eye contact. He says. It's also getting very difficult to dig. The stone that close to fall through is, uh, is very, uh. Sturdy. And, uh, she says, uh, thank you, Lord. Now, uh, we will, uh. Cross that bridge when we get there. In the meantime, just keep at it. Like I said, I'm sure the run rate will, uh, suffice and, uh. If need be, we can take, uh, the offer from our other contact. She kind of looks around to make sure everyone else, uh, feels satisfied with what has been discussed. Um, and you can tell there's like, not really, like this meeting is pointless and this not really solving any problems yet. And, uh.
This meeting have been an email.
It probably could have been an email except emails don't exist. I guess Phantoms could have been sent, but that's about it.
Don't make me explain the joke.
No, I I know. I get the joke for sure. Uh, anyway, uh, with that, Bessa says, uh, I believe that it will be adjourned then. Everyone kind of stands up, uh, the doors are opened up and everyone just kind of leaves. At their own pace.
Definitely. I'd like to I'd like to kind of link up with with Jakar as we're leaving and say, uh, Jakar, my good sir. Uh, do you have? Do you have any plans imminently or could I acquire your attention?
Uh, he, uh, stops in the doorway, uh, opens up his, uh, little booklet of a planner. Says, I do have, uh, important affairs today. I'll recommend you do the first thing tomorrow. Uh, also, um, I don't. He, uh, quickly puts it away and, uh. He, uh, holds out his hand. Says, uh, I'm Jakar, by the way. I I missed your name.
Standable. I am Floki the Loa. Pledge to meet you and I'll shake his hand.
Uh. Shaking it, he says, I don't, um. I don't envy you, by the way.
Well, I don't envy me either, so you know, but that's okay. Envy is envy is not a very good thing to have people, uh. Experience about you. I rather, uh, prefer to be just between you and me, um. Underestimated anyway. Uh, my, uh, crew, uh, uh, mates. My company, the the Twilight Revenge Company, we're down at the docks. Uh, we're intending to leave for Splinter Dish relatively imminently. I hope that is agreeable, uh, to you. We can certainly provide, um. Adequate protection for you. I think.
I'm afraid that's not going to work. I have places I need to be. However, if you are going there, you could, uh, simply. And he reaches in his bag and pulls out the schematics again. Hand these to a friend of mine. Uh, have you. Performed them. Uh, his name is Gigsley. Gigsley Mitehammer is an, uh, bit of a smith there. Based just next to the the restaurant.
Yeah, I've, uh, I've I've heard of the man.
Ah, he's quite popular with his weaponry. Uh, however, he, uh, knows his way around bending some brass into shape. And that's exactly what this project needs at the moment.
Okay, so you need him to manufacture this and he doesn't sell them already pre-made.
No, I don't think there will be anything like this on any market in the Iron Sea.
Gotcha, gotcha. Very good. Okay.
Ah, and and payment, of course. Uh, he reaches in his pouch and he presents this, uh. Bright Sapphire jewel and he says, uh, this will be, uh, more than adequate for Gigsley surfaces.
Oh, that's very excellent. I was worried I I'd have to, uh, procure them, uh, myself now. Take the Sapphire from it. Thank you very much. I'll see to getting all this done, uh, as quickly as, uh, we can.
Thank you. I hope that, uh, we can, uh, keep things within the city that way.
That's certainly, uh, the hope. Good luck with everything back here. There's certainly a lot going on.
Aye, there is. And with that dismissal, he turns around and melds into the stone wall behind you. Just completely like warps into it and he's gone.
Oh, motherfucker. Okay, wow. Jeez.
I bet you did. That was in character. It's just like, oh, okay. All right, fine. You just do that. All right.
I I had I had made peace with the robot and then he just was like, no, you haven't. All right, let's leave. Gosh, politicians, am I right?
All right, uh, you guys leave. Where we going? What we doing?
Now, listen here. I've watched Arcane. And I know that that what we have to do in this situation is we have to start like leveraging each individual entity on the council, obviously. Until we become the the ascendant political authority, because I've watched Arcane.
Oh, that that your conclusion involved one less rocket than I was expecting to.
Yeah, we don't want the rocket part to happen.
That's the best part of this show.
Yeah, I don't know. I think like.
Slavery in this the city and also the GMO.
And we can do it with a rocket.
I just, I really feel like you got the wrong moral of the story out of that one. Uh, but that's cool. It's it's a good show. Everybody here should watch the show, I think, but.
I feel like that's an important takeaway from tonight is that if nothing else happens, you have to watch Arcane in its entirety.
Do you know what they're talking about, Mason?
No, not really.
I did.
Trail.
And I I've learned to ignore them when they start talking.
This is this makes everything way simple. We need to go to Splinter Dish, get our crew, get the schematics, deal with that, get back. And then we need to go deal with the double fruits. In the middle of that, we need to squeeze these different political groups here. And and I think the the measuring stick for that is going to be the Treaty of the Free Isles.
And when we go up north, look at the double fruit and talk to Kumar and Owen again. I want to get them talking to Cloroki about the slaves. Because remember they took a real interest in the.
Address that. We're gonna have to.
Yeah, the slaves, that was the big thing and that's really what they like.
It's probably slave ghost. He's pissed. I would be.
Yeah, who knows?
Yeah, I'll first Splinter Dish or the double fruits.
First. We gotta get our crew back, don't we?
First. Before we go to Splinter Dish, we need to go a short distance into the lagoon. And then we need to throw Tulu into the lagoon to go find the thread of whatever it was.
Okay, whatever. Let's forget it.
Okay, whatever.
You have literally never understood this. Don't worry about it.
Is that something y'all picked up in Mudport? Information in Mud.
You can't. You can't be anything big enough to get it there, right?
It can be a whale, I assume. That's gotta be a CR one fourth. It literally can't eat things larger than shrimp.
I can be a pleosaurus, which is huge.
You can be a pleosaurus.
I feel like we can just tie a giant rope to you if you can be a pleosaurus with an anchor and you can just use your pleosaurus.
Why does he need the anchor?
Because he's gonna be a big tractor and he's gonna like pull the ship through.
A lot of sense.
Okay, let's do that before. If we got time, let's stop in the city and see if we can find any healing potions. Is that okay?
A diving bell.
Shopping montage?
Shopping montage.
Yep, okay. But so the the thrust of it is go to Splinter Dish. Uh, we need to get the red herring crew back, so.
They should be back some degree imminently.
Schematics, uh, figure out where our crew is, go to the other island if we have to, uh, get the crew back, come back. And then like, we need to think, and this is my idea.
Uh, I'm assuming most of the council will be dead by the time we get back.
There is this North Gate issue with the money drying up and the liabilities. It's it's a it's a problem. Uh, and they only have a month, so like or less, so, uh, basically this has to get solved right when we get back, which is good. This is good because if you present a solution and people don't have any other options, they'll go to you. So we get the the Treaty of the Free Isles. Is there a printing press in this world? We use magic. We need copies.
Uh, you can, um, take it to, uh, there's a place in Audiala that I can actually make copies for you for sure because.
Go to Mythic Isles Kinko's and we're gonna make like a bunch of these things and we're gonna say, look. We'll help you, uh, for example, um, uh, Lady Bessa. But you have to make a sealed agreement that you're going to adhere to this. We're gonna, this is gonna become the law of the land. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna do this here. Um, the principles of this document are gonna become the guiding law. We're gonna free the slaves and we're gonna, we're gonna change things here.
We're going to buy Ukashay.
Yep.
All right, uh, so, real quick, out of character, how long we won't play tonight? We won't play till ten thirty or eleven thirty?
I'm good for however long we.
I I want to throw Tulu in the lagoon.
Okay.
This is step number one.
We're gonna take, we're gonna take a two-minute pee break slash drink break while I go get a drink, and then we can continue plays as long as we want.
That's that's two minutes you can use to get started on Arcane. You can, you can go set up a free account with Netflix, thirty days.
It's not free. You can do, can you do a thirty day?
Yes.
Yeah, but that requires sitting there. How how many?
You have two minutes.
How many episodes?
It's eight episodes. They're less than an hour each. You can literally watch the entire show in an afternoon.
Man, that's eight hours.
Less than eight hours. It's like six hours.
I'll think about it. I might, I might, I just want to surprise you one day.
I. Anything would surprise me. I am easily surprised.
He's gonna show up in cosplay someday. That would be a surprise. Uh, and uh, Arcane.
I, that would, that would be very surprising. Um, I have a story that I want to tell someone.
Uh, tapestries hanging from the ceiling as you kind of walk in. Uh, there's all kinds of knickknacks.
Pottery. Are you familiar with the process of making pottery?
Yeah.
That's gotta be like. Just very dirty.
It's, it's, it sounds like a very uh odd process for sure. Uh, anyway, we're, we're not at that place. That's called The Kettle's Cry. This is across the street. Um, at a place called Bonkers, and in here, there are knickknacks, doodads. Uh, paperweights and art pieces of all kinds of different arrays and designs. Uh, you're looking for healing potions. Uh, the guy says, uh, the slippery stool is a good place uh to find healing potions specifically. Uh, from a fellow named Galligan. However, I, Bonkers, uh, have a few that I have collected throughout my years of uh. Uh, what would he say? He would say.
Diving bells?
Uh, he says, we have a bell, if you would like a bell, and he pulls it out, and um, it would be a diving bell for Key, but uh.
I would like. The diving, oh.
Well, we don't have.
Do you know anyone who has diving bells?
Uh, real quick, this guy is a satyr, by the way, in case it matters to any of you what kind of.
Oh, that's unfortunate. I'm highly racist against satyrs. But I would be willing to accept the location of a diving bell.
Um, he doesn't uh have any idea what a diving bell is.
Just like a satyr.
Uh, however, he does present a couple um potions. Uh, he has three basic healing potions, a potion of climbing and a potion of water breathing.
I would like, how much for the potion of water breathing?
Uh, he kind of looks up and down, scratches his head and says, uh, two fifty?
Best I can do is two hundred.
Uh, two fifty-five?
I only have two hundred points.
Oh, that's a shame. It's gonna be two hundred and one.
I, I accept.
You give him two hundred and one gold?
Give him, I, I give him two hundred and one gold.
All right, you give him two and one gold. He gives you the healing potion. Uh, well, but I'm business with you. There's also uh.
Water breathing potion.
Water.
What'd I say?
Healing potion.
Oh, okay, water.
You said dollars.
I'm glad I didn't say fire breathing potion. That'd been weird. Anyway, uh, he goes ahead and uh starts uh sorting through uh these uh looked like trophies on his upper shelf, uh, pulls them down. Says, uh, also, uh, these are buy one, get one free.
What are they?
What are they?
Uh, well, they're really unique.
He wasn't prepared for that question.
Puts his hand in it, uh, pulls out, uh, it's like a a uh flower. And then he kind of sits it down, and he goes, and this one here, he puts his hand in, and he pulls out, and it's like a piece of chalk. It's like they're.
Kerbalju book have anything about that flower?
Uh, you can give me a nature check at advantage.
The nature check. All right, let's see here.
Did my religion book tell me anything about that chalk?
You can give me an Arcana check at advantage.
That's seventeen.
Uh, with the seventeen, you would know that it is um not a uh. Flower that would be used in um potion making or in um uh poison antidotes. But you do know it would be a uh flower that would be usable in different ceremonies and ritual spells.
And I'll just ask him, what's a guy's name?
Uh, Bonkers.
Bonk- Bonkers, what's that flower and what's that chalk do?
Oh, I don't know. And he just puts his hands in both of them, and uh, he pulls out a a different flower and a different piece of chalk. And he goes, uh, but they do lots of different stuff. And he goes and he grabs another one, and he puts his hand in. A fish is flopping around. He goes, they're manifest cups.
Well, I'll take one.
All right.
And what about the potions of healings? How much they cost?
Uh, potions of healings are fifty gold a piece. Uh, one of these manifest cups are a hundred gold, but uh you can buy one, get one uh free, so. You know, pretty good deal there.
Okay, I'll give you.
Can do for the healing potions is forty-five.
Uh, best I can do for the healing potions is fifty-one, and he winks at you.
Uh, I will refrain from murder.
Uh, look here, buddy. I just gotta make a profit. It's, it's not about you. It's, it's about business.
It feels awfully personal.
I'll give him a, here you go. I'll give him a, the hun- a hundred and fif- wait, they were fifty gold each, right? He told me they were fifty each.
Yeah.
So that's hundred and fifty plus a hundred, so two hundred and fifty gold.
Yep.
I'll give him, I'll hand him that.
All right, give him the two hundred and fifty gold. He uh takes it, uh, kind of jiggles it around a bit, doesn't really count it, puts it under the counter. Says, well, uh, pleasure to business. If there's anything else you guys are looking for, I got all kinds of things.
And where's this other guy that you, uh, where was the slippery stool? Galligan, where can we find his shop?
Uh, you guys actually spoke to Galligan before. Uh, it was one of the first things he did for Sephiroth. He's the guy with the keys uh that Sephiroth had you go to look at, but um.
Okay.
He describes where he's at. He's actually close to Bobble's Bobble's, uh, down the same alleyway. Uh, what'd you get on your? Our check there, Loki?
Sex.
Sex. Uh, you don't know what that chalk is for. Probably for drawing stuff.
Probably, that's probably ritual chalk.
Probably uh profanity stuff. That's probably what you could draw with that.
Profane rituals.
I've been doing like a lot of bookkeeping and math, so I'm a little bit behind on what's going on here, but we're in this.
No, you aren't.
Yeah.
You guys are in the alleyway in a magic shop.
We're buying healing potions.
We're in a magic shop. Does it look like, is there anywhere I can, is there like a weapon shop? Um, or something like that?
Um, weapons, uh, I think this place would probably be your best bet for finding weapons, unless go to Abi's Archives. Uh, Abi's Archives is a place where they keep antiques. Um, this place is literally just a pawn shop, basically, like a magic pawn shop. It's not really like a magic shop as much as a magic pawn shop. And there's like a bunch of just weird things, like things you'd find in Goodwill and like things you'd find on the street curbs. And just weird, odd things in here, and that's why it's called Bonkers.
Sir, do you? It had to do with his horns.
Do you have any uh uh things that we might use if we get in a scrape?
Uh, a scrape? Uh, he uh turns around, opens up this uh cedar chest. Um, inside, this is fine um burlap cloth uh with this uh pristine uh black uh stitching around the edges. And he opens it up, and inside of it, he pulls out um about a four-inch uh long uh wooden handle. And on the other end of it is this iron prong that kind of comes off, uh, and then widens before tapering again. Uh, it looks like a garden spade, and it's like a bright silver color. He goes, uh, this here is Sheila, the best scraper I ever had.
Well, that was pretty useless. Anyways, next.
I'm offended. That was offensive.
I mean, you see the the uh satyr's like blushing, he's like, puts it back away and kind of holds it up, puts it back.
Most important item in the entire, in all the mythic gals.
I mean, it was a plus four dagger, but that's okay. You don't, plus four.
That's this, how would he do that?
Do.
How would he? Yeah, exactly. What are?
Well, tell us about Sheila.
Is this, why have you shown me a gardening tool?
Well, you, you were the scraper. This is the best scraper I've ever had.
Well, to be more direct of the matter, and I hold up my, the, the handle of my blade, I'm like, I don't want to scrape people. That's the goal. Do you have anything that does that? Does Sheila do that?
Uh, well, she can, but uh she's uh more meaningful than that. Uh, and he kind of folds it up, puts it back away. Uh, he awkwardly starts climbing up his shelves behind the counter with his like hoaved feet, kind of like knocking things off, and. He reaches up above and gets this um long uh cylindrical um case. Uh, it looks kind of like a a scroll tube, but it's like much longer than that. Kind of pulls it down, opens it up, and begins to slide out this um. Uh, this bundle of uh these long iron rods. At the end of them, they have these uh large jagged looking um things. It looks similar to like a um. Fishing skewer or like a harpoon, something that Figur would kind of familiarize it with, but it's a little bit different than that. And he says, uh. These here are uh ramped up with uh arcane energy. Uh, you could uh probably take down a a whale or uh an individual with one of these. Comes as a whole.
I I look at him, does it look like, what, what does Figur make of them?
Yeah, you can decide if you want to roll investigation, Arcana, Arcana, like what are you, what are you trying to? Whatever you're prepared with. You're just gonna use your peepers and give a perception check. I mean, you can make whatever check you'd like.
I'll do a perception check. Uh, he's not very good at anything else. I need that one.
They look like harpoons or like some type of skewer.
Well, how mu- how much for these uh old rusty harpoons?
Uh, uh, they are magical.
I'd like to s- how do I know they're magical? What does that even mean? Look at everybody else. Magical.
It's probably like the most powerful harpooning.
You can sniff it if you'd like.
What, what good would it do sniffing a harpoon?
All right, all right. What a demonstration. You get a demonstration. He like climbs up up on the countertop, like knocking knickknacks and stuff off.
If you told me that this meeting would have ended with a satyr asking you to sniff his poon, I would have assumed that was exactly what was gonna happen. And I was right.
Sean has been a bad influence on you.
That's what I'm thinking. Um, anyway, uh, he uh. Steps up on the counter, unfurls this bundle of harpoons, takes one and lunges it uh across the room. And in its place, a lightning bolt strikes across the ceiling, ripping through several different um. Uh, tapestries, like igniting them on fire, and it smashes against a bookshelf on the far end of the room with a crash. It falls over, smashing several dozen plates, and then he just looks down angrily at Figur and goes, there's your demonstration.
Like there's like a hole in the wall and papers flying everywhere and a thunder crack and my hat's flown off. I'm like. All right, I'll take four of them.
I'm gonna come in a bundle of tin as he sits back down.
How much would that be?
Uh, well, now with all the damage I just caused, uh, eight hundred.
Eight hundred and one.
Deal.
All right, I'll give him eight hundred gold. Okay, and I also totally understand why you had to make that joke. I I do get like, it was the moment you had to do it. I get that too. Eight hundred and one gold. Remove. It's quite a bit of gold. But.
Unless. Unless, and and do you have any like, well, first of all, you had Sheila, that scraper there, how much did she cost?
Uh, he uh taps the box. He says, well, I I did have her price at two hundred, but. Kind of like gives a side eye to Figur.
But I, I'll take Sheila, and do, do you have any like, like any armor that fits a little guy like me?
No, if you're looking for armor, you might try uh Tones and Stones.
Tones and Stones? Okay. Thank you. I'll give you the two hundred gold.
All right, he takes it and uh he uh reluctantly slides over this uh chest that is literally made specifically to hold it.
Uh-oh. Is it cursed?
Oh, no, it's not. It's just, it's not magical at all. It's just like a face. It's just a fancy case.
Oh, you're a missing dagger.
Oh, no, no, it's not. I mean, it's his beloved uh gardening spade. That's all it is.
Am I paid two hundred gold for that?
Yeah, but then what, it's also mechanically, it's, it's a plus four dagger. So if you.
Oh, okay.
So broken. But I, I like, I like a Howard figure.
He also is the one that has the the flying broom and like all the shape shifting power. Yeah, Tulu is broken for sure.
Wait, all right. All right, um, okay, thank you. That's our ball.
I'll probably have to head off. I gotta go eat dinner and get ready.
All right.
I just wanted to throw Tulu in the lagoon.